I'm ready when you are, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Dayton Board of Selectmen Wednesday, May 25th. It is 6:02 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at the Old Town Hall. For those who are watching the meeting via Zoom, the meeting ID is 810-0413-5679. Passcode is 362-661. Phone login would be 1929-205-6099. Public input may be provided using the following methods: contacting the Board of Selectmen prior to the meeting, and via Zoom call in by phone or computer. This meeting is being recorded and continued play on Dayton Channel 9 and on YouTube Karl Larolle?
Campa Chico?
Leonard Ho is present. Mr. Karen is planning on attending later on this evening, but at this current time, he is not in attendance. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I know you and Mr. Pacheco are great friends, but if we could have you for recording purposes to shift a little bit to your own...
Just stand up, man.
Just so the meeting began. It's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we do have a moment of silence planned, so we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since our last meeting, we have had three members of the Dayton community who have passed. Edward Paradise. Edward Red Paradise, 84, passed away peacefully at home on Sunday, May 15, 2022, surrounded by his loving family. He was the beloved husband of Marie Ledoux Paradise for 65 years, and Ed was employed by Canteen Corporation for 40 years before his retirement in 2001. Maria Maderas, 81, of North Dayton, wife of the late John Maderas, passed away peacefully on Monday, May 16, 2022. She worked as a bookkeeper for a husband's business, J.M. Maderas &amp; Sons Construction. She leaves her loving son, John M. Maderas Jr. of North Dayton. Rosemary Borden. Rosemary, age 67, passed away unexpectedly on Wednesday, May 11. She was the daughter of the late Thomas Clifford and Margaret Clemmie Clifford and wife of the late David Borden of North Dayton. She was a lifelong resident of North Dayton and a 1972 graduate of Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School. She was a nurse both at Truesdale Hospital and also the school nurse for Dayton for more than 20 years. I would also like to take a moment to pay our respects to those who lost their lives at the Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas yesterday. Our thoughts and condolences go out to the families of those who have passed since our Thank you. This evening, I wanted to present William Rooney, soon to be the Superintendent of the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District. Mr. Rooney will start his tenure on July 1. I had the privilege of serving on the selection committee with him, and he will be an excellent addition to our school district. Mr. Rooney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is absolutely an honor and a pleasure to be here in your beautiful town, and I want to extend my personal gratitude to you because I wouldn't be here today if you hadn't been on that committee, and I'm assuming you voted for me. So, I... July 1st can't get here quick enough. I mean, I absolutely love Attleboro. I've spent 10 years there. We have accomplished some phenomenal things, including a $260 million new building that will... that will open in August. But I'm ready for a new challenge, and from what I've seen of these two towns and the five schools that I'll have the privilege of representing, I'm just... I'm chomping at the bit. I'm ready to go, and I'm very excited. A couple of things that I would just like for the community to know about me is that I'm born and raised in Charleston, South Carolina. People remind me of that every... that I have an accent every once in a while. It gets stronger when I go home to Charleston. But I, you know, I've embraced living in New England for the last 16 years, and to be honest, my pathway to becoming a superintendent is not a traditional one. I started in Catholic education in Charleston, South Carolina, where I graduated from and where my parents had graduated from, a very traditional Catholic high school, and I was blessed to work there for 18 years. I was an algebra and geometry teacher, a football, basketball, and baseball coach, was able to get my master's degree when I was in my mid-20s, became a dean of students, and eventually was entrusted with the role of assistant principal. In 2006, my family made the decision to relocate to New England, and I was able to secure the principal's position at Bishop Fian High School, which, again, wonderful school, but again, just, you know, a private and very standard type of education. And I lived in the Attleboro area at that time. I was at Bishop Fian for six years. And the Attleboro posting came up, and I was contacted by someone that thought that I should apply for the position, and I was very fortunate to be able to be the unanimous selection of that screening committee back in 2012. And as I mentioned, I've been a part of a phenomenal team in Attleboro that has accomplished so many things. Our graduation rate has soared. Our dropout rate has dropped significantly. Our Chapter 74 programs, our CTE programs, have expanded from 11, when I first arrived, to 18 programs that are at capacity, if not with a waiting list. And the Chapter 74 vocational component of the education in Attleboro is something that is very, very popular for our students and a drawing card for our families.
Yeah, no, sorry.
That's okay. So again, you know, a lot of central office administrators have come through the ranks as public school educators for their entire career, but I do think that my non-traditional approach does bring some different aspects to the table. Communication is something that is extremely important to me, and also I've been involved in fundraising components as a part of private schools that I've been able to bring to Attleboro. We started a... we started an academic booster club at Attleboro that in the last seven years has raised over $350,000 directly for Attleboro High School. We've been able to completely change the complexion of the technology in the high school, and we've been able to really offer a 21st century experience for our students and for our staff. And so what I hope to bring to the table initially is a high level of visibility. I feel like... I feel like the students, the staff, and the families need to see me. I've actually recently put in a contract on a home that's a lot closer to Dayton than South Attleboro is, and so I'm excited about being able to be more prominent at the school events and town events if necessary. And... but I also think that transparency and communication is something that is extremely important to me. I've already had multiple conversations with the administrators in the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District. I've met with some of the school committee members. I've... I had a very nice luncheon with Mr. Mullin and you, Mr. Chairman, and I just think that having conversations, even though they might be difficult conversations, I think having conversations is the only way that we're going to be able to move our district forward. And I just... I want to work alongside you and our families to protect what I feel is our most valuable resource, and that's our children, because they are our future.
I just want to say it sounds like it was a great choice, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Rooney, I know you have an extensive background in capital improvement projects based on your work with the beautiful new high school in Attleboro. There is certainly a need for capital improvement projects in Dayton-Rehoboth, and I feel confident in that area that you have a handle on it. The one area that many people in Dayton-Rehoboth are concerned about is the relationship between the two towns, and what steps are you going to take to improve that relationship?
That's a great question. I am... I'm working on something behind the scenes right now that will be an effort on my part to personally host a get-together for important members of both of these communities, and I'm hoping that, you know, breaking bread together and being able to socialize together later in the summer will give us an opportunity to see one another in a little different light, you know, maybe without the suits and the ties and with a little bit more of a relaxed atmosphere. But I think that the other thing is, is that if I... the more conversations that I can have with each of the leadership teams in their respective towns. So coming here as often as you need me to and, you know, going to the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen meetings as often as they need me to will allow me to be a conduit, if you will, and make sure that, you know, the things that I'm saying to you are the same things that are being said to them. And I hope that in some ways that I'll be able to be almost like a glue, to be able to bring the towns a little closer together. I think that there is understandable angst when you start talking about finances, and I've been extremely impressed with Mr. Baxter, who is the school district's business manager. He's only been on... he's only been on staff for about eight or nine months, but he's a very bright man, and sometimes he talks over my head. But I think that he brings a level of professionalism, and if I can add my communication skills to that, then I think that people might not necessarily be thrilled about how much of, you know, their taxes or how much money from the town is going into the schools and into the district, but at least they'll understand why. But I think as another component to that is that... I mentioned at the beginning, I've seen so many wonderful things that have been going on in the schools already, just in this short time. I'm extremely impressed with Ms. Desert, who is the president... principal at Dayton Elementary, and I've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Wheeler, who has served the middle school for so long, but I'm extremely impressed with Amy Younger, who has been the assistant principal there for about eight or nine years, and she's going to be the new principal. And I think that they are... they're a dynamic combination. Lynn and Amy get along really well. They have a phenomenal PTO that has already welcomed me in, and if we can celebrate the wonderful things that our kids are doing and that our staff is doing through Facebook, through Instagram, through social media, I think that it creates an excitement and creates an enthusiasm, and I think that enhances trust. And if we can... if we can build trust, then I think that will help bring the towns together as well.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you. I've reached out to the members of the Board of Selectmen in Rehoboth, and they are looking forward to having a meeting, a joint meeting, which is something that hasn't happened in...
A summit, if you will.
Yes, absolutely.
That would be great.
Mr. Mullin, you as well are invited to that, which is working on the date. But I look forward to a dinner meal... a dinner meeting as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, Dayton's Town Nurse, Nicole Mellow, of the Board of Health, will be speaking in regards to the COVID-19 update. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Initially, when we put this on the agenda, we were kind of seeing an uptick in the town as well as in the state of Massachusetts. When I visited this morning, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, COVID dashboard, it actually looks like we're starting to go back down, so maybe that was the little peak that we're going to see. So hopefully it will continue that trend. The last two weeks, we've been averaging around 20 cases. Prior to that, it was around 10 cases, so there was a slight increase. And due to in-home testing, of course, obviously, our testing is only based off of people that are being PCR tested. That gets reported to the state. The at-home testing is not reported to us. The schools also were seeing a slight increase. They had reached out to me just to let me know what they were seeing. I just wanted to take this time to visit some of the guidance that I have people reaching out to me about and still questioning. I think it's good now and then just to touch base on it if people have questions in regards to these certain different guidance that we have. So as we know, the guidance was released, it was late December, early January. We're still following that same guidance. Up here, Mike has put for me... I have taken this just from the mass.gov website and isolated the chart out of the text so that you could see it more easily. And this is just where people can go if they have had an exposure and they're trying to figure out what the guidance is for them. I wanted to touch base on what a close contact is, because I think some people get confused. A close contact is if you're closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period to someone who tested positive. This is not you had a close contact, and then you were near him, and now he's a close contact. No. You're not sick. You were just a close contact, so there's no reason for anyone that you were around to then go home, and we... none of us would ever... we would all be in quarantine right now. So just... I just wanted to clarify that, because people get very confused with that. You'll see this chart. They're now basing it off of your vaccination status as well as your ability and willingness to mask. We're going by the up-to-date on your vaccination status. This is you've had your first series, and you've had at least one booster. That qualifies you as being up-to-date. So you look at this chart, you quickly look at your vaccination status as well as your willingness to mask, and you go through it that way. It does say if you are up-to-date with your vaccinations and willing to mask, that quarantine is no longer required. I just like to remind people that even though you're vaccinated, you can still get sick. All the time when I speak to people, they're shocked. So this is... that's still very much a thing. And one other thing is the quarantine and isolation, the difference. People tend to use those terms interchangeably, and they're not. Like I said, quarantine is you've been exposed, isolated is you tested positive. There are treatment options now. There's four antivirals. You can reach out to your provider, but also Massachusetts does have a new service. It's on mass.gov/covidtelehealth. You can go on there, you complete a survey. From that survey, they will find out if you're eligible to take the next step. This would be a telehealth appointment with a provider. They'll go over your case and see if you can have one of the treatments that are available now. Real quickly, vaccinations. We currently have vaccine options for ages five and up, now including boosters. A lot of people ask me, a frequently asked question in regards to vaccination, is if they just had COVID, and I'm speaking to them, they're like, oh, can I... now they've decided either they want the primary series or they want a booster. When can I go do that? You should obviously wait till you're out of isolation and feeling better, but that can be done right away if you wish. Though it is said that you should probably hold off three months, because you did just have an infection, you have immunity, that's not really the time to run out and go get a booster or the initial series. I did have... I have a bi-weekly meeting, a webinar with DPH, and people were throwing around really great questions in regards to, I guess, how the countries have done away with isolation and quarantine, and when will we do that in the United States? We're not quite there yet, but it is getting out there. They do realize that this is looking more like an endemic than a pandemic at this point. And I think that was all that I had. Yes? Any questions?
Yeah, just if you could explain the discrepancy in the numbers.
I don't... I don't know. I know what you're going to say. The first page... I went by the second page, because that more was reflective of what I saw in... online, but I don't know why it's like that. I had that same question. I looked over and over again. I was like, there must be something I'm missing, but it seems like a typo. I would go by the second page, because maybe even that's more of what I was seeing.
Yeah, that third page that has the lower numbers says it was updated on May 19th, and we've given numbers to May 22nd, so maybe that's it. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't... I don't know. But yes, I saw that as well.
Mrs. Mellow, thank you for a presentation that was certainly transparent, and the AV presentation is a big help so people can actually follow along. Just hearing numbers doesn't quite do it.
Yes. Me just saying the quarantine, it's confusing. It's confusing to me, and I reiterate it every day. So I understand.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole.
Next on the agenda is the Memorial Day Proclamation. The town of Dayton has had many, many servicemen and women, over the years, sacrifice, in some instances, their lives on behalf of this nation. And this Monday, we will be paying respect to them with a ceremony that will begin, I believe, at 10:00 AM at the town pavilion, actually, the Lions Club Pavilion behind Town Hall, and then moving to the flag area for a dedication, and then returning back to the pavilion area for some greetings by town officials and the reading of some traditional program materials from former selectmen Mrs. Gulat and Mr. Menjies. I would like to read a proclamation from the governor's office. Whereas while the nation was still recovering from the horrors of the Civil War, people in cities and towns across the country gathered to honor those Union and Confederate soldiers who had given their lives celebrating the first decoration day. And whereas after World War I, the nation came together again to honor those who had fallen in the service of their country, renamed Memorial Day. Last Monday in May is when people remember and honor the memory of all the men and women who fought and died in all American wars and conflicts. And whereas throughout our country's history, thousands of Massachusetts citizens have fought in wars and conflicts to defend our safety and way of life. And whereas this legacy of patriotism and dedication to country is an inspiration to all Americans, and whereas it is appropriate that all Massachusetts citizens remember the bravery of those who gave their lives, so that their sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. Now therefore, I, Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim May 30, 2022, to be Memorial Day, and urge all the citizens of the Commonwealth to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance, given at the Executive Chamber in Boston this first day of May in the year 2022, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 245th. By His Excellency Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth, Karen E. Polito, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth, and William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth. God save the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Mr. Pacheco, do you have anything to wish to...
No, just that we're celebrating, not celebrating, but we're honoring those that have lost their lives on this Monday, coming Monday. I believe it's at 10 o'clock.
I believe.
And it'll be services at the Veterans Memorial, and there'll be refreshments after at the pavilion, as you noted.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we want to gain public input. We have limited public input to five minutes. Any department heads who have business regarding town issues should ask to be placed on the agenda with Mr. Mullin, the town administrator, and that we also ask that public comments of a critical nature involving employees or members that are not elected be directed to Mr. Mullin, especially if the party that you're going to be speaking about is not present. At this time, Mr. Marvo, I believe you have... Could you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record? Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Marvo. I live on 102 Forest Street, and it's about the speeding going on in Forest Street again. I appreciate it today, because I noticed the chief put out a sort of like a speed limit sign out there. It's marked 35 miles per hour, so that's the beginning. But the whole street has not had a speed limit sign since I lived there. Once in a while, we see cars speeding down, people want to take walks with their children, and it's really becoming really unsafe. It was brought up in the past that they were going to go through some state audit to try to get us some speeding signs put up, but nothing came from it, and I just want to know where we stand right now with this. Because a lot of people are concerned, especially with the good weather, people like to walk, and they're afraid right now, because I'll give you an example. A few months ago, I was doing the speed limit. I had a truck behind me, and he thought I was going too slow. He passed me, and he gave me the bird on Forest Street. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Forest Street is a town-owned road. It is not under the privy or control of the state. What are the rules in regard to signs?
So to be honest with you, that is actually a question for the Highway Superintendent and the Chief of Police. I can discuss this with them offline, and if you'd like, at the June 8th... at the June 8th Selectmen's meeting, we can have an update for the board, if that's okay.
Absolutely. And I will say this. Has Serbit done a review of that road, especially in light of the Forest Hill project?
Not that, not that I know of. And I'll also check in to see if we've ever requested that of Serpide, and their assistance on something like that before. I can check in with that as well and have an update for you and Mr. Marvall on the 8th, at the next meeting as well.
As we enter into the close of the fiscal '22 budget, and at some point in the very near future, we will have a idea of free cash. Based on what I'm hearing from Mr. Marvall, unless there are any concerns stated by Serpide or the police chief or Mr. Ferry, I'd like to make that a priority that we post accordingly. Chief McDonald, please.
I just want to let you know that, I don't know if you've driven down Pleasant Street, we put up one of those new.
Yeah, over here, just, so just so those in Zoom land will be over here, yeah?
We've put up one of those new signs, those police signs, and it has speed limit, like the ones down on Center Street with Bristol Agia's. We purchased two of those through a grant. One was put up this past, last week on Pleasant Street, and the next one is going to be on Forest Street. So that's going to be there all the time. So we have it there. And I know what you're saying, the concerns about Forest Street. I know that that's one of the worst streets in town. We have, you know, they're all over the place, but Forest Street is one of our main concerns. So that'll be put up probably next week sometime, just to let you know, okay? And we will, and we will have the patrols on there to monitor the traffic too, time to time if we can, okay? That's, right now, that's what we're doing.
Chief, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Marvall, I assure you, it will be a priority.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Is there anyone else, public input? Anyone on Zoom that has anything they'd like to address at this time? I don't see anyone that has anything, so announcements?
Yes, first, I'll give the list of vacancies on different boards, committees, and commissions. Cable Television Committee has one vacancy. Cemetery Commission has one vacancy. Commission on Disability has three vacancies. Community Preservation Committee has one vacancy. Conservation Commission has one. Land Use Committee has one. Open Space Committee has two. Planning Board has one. Do they still have that vacancy? Or do we, is that the one that we filled?
I'm sorry, what the Fink?
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Says one vacancy, but we just.
That is, that's been filled.
That's been filled. So Conservation Committee has one vacancy. Superintendent of Pest Control, we need. TIP Review Board has a vacancy of one, and the Historical Commission has one vacancy. The annual town meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 6th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School Auditorium. A town meeting information forum has been scheduled by the Board of Selectmen for 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, at Old Town Hall to provide an overview and answers any questions on the proposed warrant articles. Bulky items, curb site pickup is scheduled for Monday, June 6th, 2022, through Fridays, June 10th, 2022. Tax may be purchased at the Board of Health Office, 1111 Somerset Avenue. Contact the Board of Health to order your tax at 774-872-0943. Separate tag is required for each item to be disposed. Bulky item scheduled is the same schedule as trash pickup, and items must be out no later than 7:00 AM. The Dayton Lions Club, and I'm a member of the Dayton Lions Club, just so everybody knows. Bank distribution will be held at, next, at 8:00 AM on Saturday, June 18th, 2022, at Town Hall, Lower Level, 979 Somerset Avenue. And that's all the announcements. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Town administrators' report?
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, I just want to give a quick update on our town meeting preparation. As a result of the, of the board's work together with the Finkham last week, we now have a final warrant. The warrant has been posted on the town of Dayton homepage right here at the top on the news updates. And then you click, and then, and then you get all the information and then you get all the information related to the warrant. We do have an accessible version of the warrant as well. And we have the town administrators, we have the town administrators' warrant letter as well. All, all that is at the mailhouse now. So it will hit the homes and the mailboxes of all Dayton residents by mid next week. Like we are, like, we, like, we are having informational meeting on the town meeting warrant next week as Selectman Pacheco mentioned, at 6:00 on Tuesday, the 31st. To answer any questions, address any concerns about any of the four, about any of the 41 warrant articles that we have on the warrant. But, um, 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 uh, uh, so like, uh, so at this point, at this point, we're in really good shape. A lot of work has really gone into getting us here, and we're ready for the annual town meeting on the 6th of June. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any comment?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin, thank you very much. Selectmen's report, Mr. Pacheco?
I just want to mention that Agricultural Commission had a meeting last night. They did not have a quorum, so the next meeting is in June.
I do have a couple items, actually, three. First, regarding the vacancies, if anyone is interested in serving on any of these committees, they should send a resume and a cover letter to the Board of Selectmen's office, and the secretaries will make sure that it gets to the appropriate departments. Their processes differ, but if you send the information to either LeAnn or Karen in the Selectmen's office, they will get it to the appropriate department, and that department will be in touch with you. Regarding the Dayton Industrial Development Commission, we had the privilege of attending the open house. It was a two-day event, the ribbon cutting of One Connection, marijuana retail facility on Williams Street. And during that presentation, One Connection gave to the town of Dayton as part of an impact fee, twenty, a check for $25,000. The Dayton Industrial Development Commission met last night, I mean, I'm sorry, Monday night. And at that meeting, a developer came in and expressed interest in building a plant in Dayton. We've had another marijuana facility come to our meeting and also attended a planning board meeting. We are making a serious attempt, both the Board of Selectmen, working closely with the Dayton Industrial Development Commission to bring business into this town, commercial, business, and some industry. We will be also holding sometime in September, a business expo, which we will be trying to recruit businesses to come, but also the businesses that exist in town that are looking to expand and have vacant space, they should come as well to speak to these prospective businesses to see if they can entice them to move into their facilities. It is also a good opportunity for people looking for work to come and maybe hand out a resume to these businesses or make contact with them so that they could find some employment. There are some really exciting things going on with the Dayton Industrial Development Commission, and Friday and Saturday was a wonderful experience. Mr. Pacheco, you attended that as well?
Yes, I did, and I just want to comment that it was a smooth operation. The concern about security, that check that they gave us for $25,000 is a down, a down payment on the host agreement that we have with them. They have to pay 3% in their revenue, that's the money they make to the town of Dayton. And that $25,000, we have asked that they submit that at the beginning of the process of them opening up. But it seems to be a great opportunity, the, for Dayton. My understanding is that they have four employees that are residents of Dayton, which we had asked that, we encouraged them to hire Daytonians. So that's very good, and it's, seems like it's a good fit for Dayton.
I just want to add that the owners of One Connection have the space and are planning on expanding. So the employment opportunities will also be expanding. And hopefully, the revenue, both for them and the town, will also be increasing. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Pacheco?
I have no old business.
Thank you. Correspondence. Mr. Mullin, I see that we have a resignation from the Cable Committee.
Would you like me to read that, Mr. Chairman, that letter? So we see the letter from Andrew LaPointe, resigned from the Cable Committee.
If you'd like, I can read it first, or?
Hey, you can read it if you'd like, you can.
No, no, no. It has been an honor to serve the Dayton, I'm sorry, the town of Dayton, the capacity of member of the Cable Television Committee since the beginning of 2017. In the five-year term, the team that has been in place has turned our town's peg access station into one that could match just about any other. This team brought us into the modern times with our equipment and with plans to continue renovations and upgrades until we can be seen as a leader in peg access in the local area. We have become a team with broad skills, traveling, shooting, and producing content at a much higher level than the team with the small control room could when I originally joined. Our team has downsized, weathered the storm through the COVID-19 Zoom era, and picked up new members along the way to continue producing content at the level Dayton's community expects. There is still so much work to be done. Unfortunately, this letter is to request that I not be reappointed to my position following the end of the fiscal year. I leave behind a team that is capable and up to the task left to bring our station to the capacity it can reach. Upon my graduation from UMass Dartmouth on May 6th, I will be seeking full-time employment in my field. It would no longer be able to give the full-time focus and time required, given the new requirements and duties we face every day. If this committee ever needed an advisement in the future, I would gladly stay in contact with the family we built at Dayton TV9. My final day of work and capacity as a member of this committee will be June 30th, 2022. The end of my appointment, signed a long five years ago. Respectfully submitted, Andrew LaPointe, Member, Cable Committee, Dayton TV9. Mr. LaPointe?
Governor of Iowa. Five full years of this. This was, this was the job that put gas in my tank to get to DR. This was the job that got me through school. Like the letter said, at this point, this job has become the Wednesday night, five-hour-a-week job to the 24/7 on-call, 365 days of the year job. Sometimes I feel like we are the post office. It's been really good, though. The family we got sitting out back there can handle what's going to come. Like I said, Zoom meetings, doing this, going down to one meeting room, having three meeting rooms. I don't, you, Mr. Chairman, weren't here when our office was a very small room closet in the basement level of Town Hall, but has become a large, two-roomed facility, which will hopefully hold a small studio at some point in the upcoming few years, which I hope to see. But like I said, at this point, I feel like someone needs to be able to step in that can give it the full-time capacity that I will soon not be able to.
Mr. LaPointe, thank you. And I have a favor to ask of you. Before you retire or leave.
I wish I'd retired.
Could you either have an exit interview with Mr. Mullin or send him a letter of recommendations that you would like to see to make your team's job easier and more successful?
I can do that.
Deeply appreciate it. I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for, did I interrupt you?
No, 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 no. I was just going to say.
Yeah, thank you. Also want to thank you for your service. It's going to take a little while for me getting used to not seeing you over there. I know you're going to be there for another month. Hopefully, you'll come back on occasion.
Oh, yeah, I won't be able to run away from this as quickly.
I think you're going to have a great future. I also graduate, as well as, my wife has been to UMass Dartmouth, and my, both my daughters graduated from UMass Dartmouth. So you're going to have a great opportunity in your life, and I look forward to seeing you around town. Are you still going to end up working, continue working at, good, we'll see you there. But good luck in your job hunt, and congratulations again.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pacheco? At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation from the Cable Committee with sincere thanks and appreciation from Andrew LaPointe.
I shall move.
I will second that motion, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda is the resignation of Karen Robitaille from the Community Preservation Committee. I don't see Mrs. Robitaille hit the audience, but I will read her letter. Hello, members of CPC. Please accept my resignation. I enjoyed my five years being the senior clerk for the CPC, working with the different members, recommending projects for your townspeople to further improve the history of the town. I feel it's my time to move on and enjoy being a snowbird. I wish all of you the best. Thank you, Karen Robitaille. Before we accept this resignation, I do have a question for Mr. Mullin. I see the title Senior Clerk. I take that to mean that she is employed by the town of Dayton?
Yes, she is.
And she is hired by the town of Dayton, not the CPC?
Yes, you are correct.
So we will be posting that position?
Yes, we will, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Karen Robitaille from the CPC.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
We wish her luck.
Next, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of May 11th, 2022.
Ms. Brady, was that, those minutes, was that in that packet?
The, uh, May 15th was in there?
May 11th.
May 11th was not completed. If we could defer that to the next meeting, that would be good.
I'll make a motion that we continue the regular meeting minutes of May 11th.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of May 18th, 2022.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of May 18th, 2022.
I will second that.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Approval of the warrants.
Warrants for May 18th, 2022, 46-8-22, $109,675.19 in 46B-22, I'll make a motion that we approve those warrants.
This evening, I am voting no on the warrants due to the fact that it includes a payment to a consultant in the Board of Assessors' office, who since January had objected to paying the consultant. the consultant because the assessor's office was in the red, and is still in the red, to the tune of over $7,700. The previous Board of Selectman Chairman, the accountant, and the town administrator have all attempted to discuss this issue with the Board of Assessors' Office. And to this date, that issue is still unresolved. In June, the Board of Assessors will be coming before the Board of Selectmen to ask for a line item transfer to balance their budget. I have serious concerns about fiscal management and good business practices going into debt and continuing to add to that debt after objections since January have been raised by myself personally on multiple occasions. Concerns expressed by the accountant and the town administrator have all gone unaddressed. At this time, I cannot support the passage of either of these warrants. Next on the agenda, new business. At this time, I would ask that Mr. Shea come before us for a presentation on the proposal for the new Dayton Public Library. Mr. Mullen, before Mr. Shea speaks, do you have anything you wish to?
So, yeah, so last week, we presented the purchase and sale, the proposed purchase and sale for 207 Main Street. And last week, when the board approved that, we said we'd be back next week. But we are here tonight to present our plans and our vision for the building. Actually, I think it was the end of March, Joe, we brought, we brought Joe's firm Granite City Partners to the town for an engagement. And they have been working with us, with the library trustees, and with the library director to try, to try to put a proposal together that would really advance our collective vision. So I will turn it over to Joe, you know, to give an overview of where we are, you know, and how we got here, and also what our vision really is. So Joe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullen.
Oh, sorry. There you go. You're all set.
Thank you. Chairman Hull, Member Pacheco, my name is Joseph Shea. I'm with Granite City Partners. We're a municipal real estate advisory and project consultant. I often describe that we tend to exist before projects exist. So we do a lot of conceptual planning work to help communities in a very stepwise fashion get to town meeting or city council approval on initiatives, so that programs don't have major upfront costs before they get the approval of the legislative body, in this case, town meeting approval and the executive board. Everything I'm going to present to you tonight is already on the town's webpage, so anybody who feels that they need to make copious notes, you can also find this information on the webpage. And with me tonight via Zoom is Nelson Liu. Nelson is an architect I've worked alongside. Nelson's firm, Schwartz Silva, has a deep and broad, strong resume in libraries and municipal buildings. So some of the graphics and layouts you'll see tonight as a concept are from Nelson's firm. If Nelson is necessary during Q and A, certainly, we will activate him, and I'm very much appreciative that he's joined me tonight. I'm also extraordinarily appreciative of Mr. Mullen, Jim Aguirre, and Jocelyn Tavares and her staff. They've spent significant time with us, helping us understand the history of the Dayton Public Library, the programs, the mission, the vision, some of the things that I will briefly touch upon tonight. But they were very generous with their time, and I can't thank you enough, given how busy the world is. Never mind the town of Dayton, I do appreciate that. Tonight, we're going to talk about a proposed solution for the public library. I'm going to assume everybody is familiar with the current situation with the library's temporary and split location. But as we were initiated, or as we initiated our research into possible solutions, as we typically do, whoop, Michael, there we go. We were thrilled to find on the town's website a mission, and that mission for the town's library really was succinct but quite impactful. It impacts from infants to elders, and it talks about the joy of reading and the power of information. I will disclose that I'm married to a speech pathologist who's a reading teacher, so I have a personal interest in reading, and it's very prevalent in our home. But the mission was also backed up with a very robust vision. The slide you see before you tonight is actually some excerpts from a vision that talks about how the library wishes to be a community resource, how it can provide support for community organizations and government, local government issues, how it's an authority on local history. And as we embarked on this activity, we found the library has 30,000 to 35,000 artifacts. For the town's availability, however, in its current condition or situation, less than 10% are actually available to your townspeople. What we also found through that research process is a very well-developed collection of previous community input, solicitation of various community groups, documentation around what programming goals should the Dayton Public Library have. And what you see on your screen here is a summary of some of those community input forums, but looking to make sure that the Dayton Public Library has the ability to deliver research and reading space, a teen section, a children's section, some craft space for programming, meeting rooms, community space, certainly, staff and operations space, and outdoor programming. Through all of that research, we really found a history of impactful community service by the Dayton Public Library. What we also found was a rather interesting evolution of the library. The library started in 1910 as the Carnegie Library on Main Street, and has over 100 years of service. We also researched and learned about some multiple efforts for expansion or enhancements that really had uneven progress over the years. We learned about the significant challenges at the 395 Main Street building, and then we experienced firsthand the temporary split operations. We found a quote on the, on the town's library, and in discussions with Jocelyn, there's a moniker about the Dayton Public Library being the little library that could, and certainly, this history has proven that, that it is the little library that could. So as we moved forward through this process, there was a number of recent activities. I apologize, as I stand here today, I can see that this slide is rather crowded. But for those who cannot see it clearly, it's a string of meetings and a string of activities to investigate possible permanent public library solution sites, some of the technocratic activities that must happen, such as real estate appraisals, a March 30th Board of Selectmen meeting with the library trustees, where the board voted to move forward with the possible acquisition of a site, and the library trustees gave a unanimous endorsement of that activity. There is tonight's Board of Selectmen's meeting, excuse me, I missed one. There was a meeting with the possible site about the potential to execute a purchase and sales agreement. And then that feedback was that the seller was amenable to selling to the town, and to be quite frank, to be patient with the town's purchasing process as a municipality as opposed to a private buyer. The process is very different. However, the seller was very open to being patient through that process. There's tonight's Board of Selectmen's meeting, and then there's upcoming events, as already mentioned, on May 31st, the Board of Selectmen's Town Meeting Information Forum, which we can do a deeper dive on any of the elements we touch on tonight, and then eventually, the June 6th Town Meeting. Through that evolution, you know, through that path in navigating the current temporary location, the next step in that evolution that we are here to recommend is a proposed permanent public library solution at 207 Main Street. I'm going to assume that not everybody is familiar with 207 Main Street, although my instincts tell me that they probably are. But 207 Main Street is at the curved intersection of Main Street and Pleasant Street. It is currently a church. And the building itself is described on this slide as we were screening buildings. This is a 9,000-square-foot building on two floors. The main level is 4,500 square feet. For comparison, the former Dayton Library was about 3,000 square feet, so this would be about a 50% expansion, just using the main floor. There is future potential programming on the lower floor as well, but part of our recommendation for Phase 1 or for this initiative is that the use of the existing main floor, which is completely built out, which I'll talk about, really provides some instant impact in a very cost-effective manner for the Dayton Public Library. The existing floor is already segregated into existing rooms and spaces that can be programmed to align with the program goals in the previous slide for a teen room, children's section, programming space, general circulation and reading. The building has ADA-compliant elements and a compliant fire system. It sits on 3/4 of an acre site with a little over 60 parking spaces, with it having a curved edge where Main Street and Pleasant Street come together. Some of the spaces get a little tricky. It's not a rectangle, but there are over 60 spaces. The building itself is not in the 100-year flood zone, and the building is on the Massachusetts Historic Commission's historic inventory. Certainly is a very charming historic building. Through this process, we investigated the Massachusetts Historic Commission's inventory. I may need you to advance, Michael.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Just some highlights of that investigation is the building was originally Smith Memorial Hall, built in 1889. Alfred Smith and his wife Anna Marie Talbert, who was, Anna Marie was from Dayton, commissioned the construction of the building after they bought the parcel. Apparently, Alfred Smith was a Newport real estate tycoon. The building was designed and built by John Dixon Johnson. Through the research, one interesting element about John Dixon Johnson, he has over 200 buildings that he designed and built, one of which is Newport City Hall. So he was the constructor of this building. And this building has been used for 133 years of various assembly uses, most recent Father's Family Home Church. When we investigated the possibility for the church, we looked at different ways to renew the church. We worked with Schwartz Silva, who was a part of my team, to look for how we could possibly maximize the existing bones of a very solid building and a very solid layout, but also bring it to a more modern, appropriate standard for today's public libraries. As part of that, we've got a few renderings of what could be for the purposes of discussion. So this is a children's section within the existing library, within the existing building. To create the section, we add no walls. We make no structural changes. And for those familiar with the building, the children's section would be on what is currently the stage in the building. We have the opportunity to reuse the existing assembly area, pardon me. The existing assembly area where the parishioners sit as the library, reusing a significant amount of the previous library casework, storage, certainly, as many of the artifacts that we can get. But the building was built for public assembly purposes, so we have an opportunity to reuse this space, again, purely with the renovations of removing chairs and adding in existing bookcases and casework. This would be the primary heart of the building. However, the building would add, have some other accessory, or, excuse me, related uses. This is really hard to see at this distance, however, this is a plan drawing, again, it's on the website, of the building. For orientation, Main Street would be at the bottom of the screen, and Pleasant Street would be on the left side as you curve around. The building is already, again, full with ADA-compliant elements, so there's a ramp on the right-hand side. But as you would come up the right-hand side of the building into a ramp, there would be a staff room and a meeting room on your right. As you would take a left into the main rectangle, the main area that was shown on the previous drawing, you could access the library. You would pass the arrival desk, where Jocelyn and her staff would be located, and then you could also enter into the children's section by going up a ramp or up a staircase. So the children's section is in the center on the right, excuse me, in the center on the top of the screen. To the left of the building, there is actually an existing kitchen. That would be some programming space for craft and storage with the reuse of the existing sinks. We could also have some workroom and storage space in what is now a fairly large kitchen area. At the bottom of the screen, in the rounded section, which is one of the most prominent locations on the building, certainly, the most visible, visibly identifiable section with two portico porches on either side, would be the teen room. We have a concept in Phase 1 to close in those two portico porches, glaze them so that the teens have their own section, where they feel that they have their own space, but they also, the way the building and doors lay out, they're not hidden around a corner. They can be observed from the main section. This is a concept as what could be, as I said, again, without structural renovations, without changing of many walls, on the first floor, maximizing kind of a stepwise approach to if this, if the solution were to move forward. The first floor is in great shape to make some minor modifications through the capital planning and strategic planning approach, but move in relatively quickly. The strategy that we have proposed...
Sorry.
We're doing, we're doing fine. The strategy that we have proposed for this coming town meeting is what we've termed Phase 1, but that would be the acquisition and the initial capital improvements to get a viable 4,500 square feet for the Dayton Public Library, to have a permanent home and a location. The steps in that strategy would be town meeting approval for the acquisition of the property. At this point, or given the possible use of ARPA funds of $790,000, which was the appraised value of the building, town meeting would need to vote affirmatively for the acquisition of the property, but not necessarily the, not the use of the funding. ARPA funds are authorized for use by the executive body, not the legislative body. So there will be a town meeting article about the acquisition of the property for a future Dayton Public Library. The second component of Phase 1 would be a $150,000 appropriation from Capital Stabilization Fund. That appropriation would be used for some exterior weatherization that we would, that we have recommended through this process, an improved accessibility entrance to the craft room on the left side of the screen or on the Pleasant Street side, one staircase modification, and then some parking lot and grounds improvements. As this stands, Article 31 at Town Meeting would be... As this stands, Article 31 at Town Meeting would be for $150,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund, but it's my understanding that the town is also actively working to identify any other additional funding sources. This Phase One would get the library ready and able to move in with their existing artifacts, their existing casework, consolidate back into a single location. The building itself, though, also has 4,500 square feet in the basement floor. So there is an opportunity down the road for a future phase or future articles, well after the fiscal year 23 Town Meeting. But there is a possible fit-out in lower-level activities. It's our recommendation that should these two articles pass at Town Meeting and the Phase One initiative move forward, the town, when ready, starts to scope how to develop to maximize the basement of that building. And you get a significant improvement in a cost-effective manner from your current situation, but there's upside or bonus space in that basement. It will require some future modifications that yet haven't been fully scoped or priced. However, we want to make sure that it's clear that, given the historic nature of that building and the layout, there are community preservation and green community opportunities, potentially down the road for that basement-level build-out. And there certainly are state and federal funding opportunities always for the future expansion or a different public use within this building. So at Town Meeting, there will be two articles. Article 30, again, is to authorize the acquisition of 207 Main Street. And then Article 31 would be the authorization to expend up to $150,000, which is the budget for the capital improvements that I had described. With that said, there's a little more detail on the town's website, something that wouldn't present well on the screen, but we'd be happy to answer any questions or discussion. However, I do also want to just take a moment to offer to Jocelyn, if there's anything she'd like to add. She did a wonderful job helping us navigate this process.
Certainly. Please come up.
I really just wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Mullen, the Board of Trustees, and the Friends of the Public Library and the staff of the library for all of their work and support through this time. And it's an exciting opportunity for us. And I kind of, I just hope the rest of the community feels the same as we do. But if anyone has any questions, I'm more than willing to talk to anybody or respond through email or do whatever you need to have the right amount of information you have to make a vote that you're comfortable with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shea, I do have a question in regards to the Phase One layout. I noticed that you have a craft room or staff room. You have a staff work room or meeting room. Is it possible to, maybe since you have a lot of room downstairs, to remove a storage area and dedicate a room as a staff work room rather than eliminating either the craft room or the meeting room?
That is possible. Through this process, we looked at two existing storage rooms, one off the children's section, and then one off of what we call the craft programming space. Given the number of artifacts that the library has and the amount of work they do behind the scenes that most of us don't see, we would like a little more space. But should this initiative move forward, none of those opportunities are foreclosed on. We can certainly adjust the programming appropriately based upon the staff needs.
You know, I'd hate to see a program room. And I have, we have a lot of groups in this town in very limited meeting space. And the meeting room is extremely important and will definitely see a lot of use. We've had committees that have had to cancel meetings because we didn't have enough meeting space. We had three, four meetings going on at the same night. Couldn't, somebody couldn't have a meeting because there was no place to hold a meeting. So I see this as being something huge. But I also see the potential as that meeting room being a possible moneymaker. If the board would ever entertain the idea of renting out the meeting room to groups, civic groups in the community. I also see a staff room is very important so that the individuals have a place to escape from the day-to-day business that at times can get pretty hectic. So I wish you would, you know, consider that as you...
We certainly will.
...over your designs.
Mr. Pacheco, do you have anything?
I just want to say that we met maybe a week ago, Mr. Shea and Jocelyn and Jim Agia and Town Administrator Mike Mullen. We went through the whole building. You had some good ideas. I'm really going to listen to Ms. Tavoris's, because she's the one that's going to be working there all the time. And she knows what's best for her staff and what's best for the community. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from Jocelyn. But I want to thank you very much for the presentation you gave us tonight and what you will be giving for the public next week and at the annual town meeting. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I am very excited as we move forward this project. And again, I'd like to thank Mr. O'Connor, Trustees, Mrs. Tavoris, and especially Mr. Agia, Mr. Ken Pacheco, and Mike Mullen for helping to negotiate this wonderful agreement that will make something that three times has been shot down over 25 years. And the people of Dyton will have a library that they can be proud of. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the fiscal year 2021 audited financial statement and management letter. Mr. Mullen?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be fairly quick on this. FY '21, FY '22 audited financial statements and the management letter is pretty dense. And it does make for some really good bedtime reading. But the good news is, the good news is the audited financial statements were submitted to the bond rating entities, actually before the end of March, so we could meet, so we could meet our bond and debt service disclosure requirements. So everything is in order there. I will draw your attention, I will draw your attention to the management letter comments, which are provided towards the end. If you have any questions on the financial statements, of course, I just want to make sure I'm sharing as well. But there are various issues that our auditors, once again, there are various issues that our auditors, once again, brought to our attention, which they recommend we address in the coming months. And you do have accompanying documentation from the town accountant that does exactly spell out how we're going to meet those recommendations and comments as well. And that's also in the packet. But just really going through quickly, just as I'm talking, I'm bringing the management letter up. Okay, here we go. We have informational, we have informational items relating to the town's and network security. And our auditors, they recognize our network security efforts. And they have recommended, they have recommended that we continue to place a priority on them. They also included as informational item, also related to an informational item is our fraud risk mitigation efforts. And they are recommending that we continue to make this a priority. You know, on a regular and periodic basis, look, you know, look at, like, look at new ways to evaluate, you know, our fraud risk mitigation efforts, which is a good thing. Obviously, in FY '22, which will be the, which will be next year's audit for the current fiscal year we're in now, we will be subject to GASB 87, which we, which we will have to in our capital assets to come for all our leases as well. So any capital asset that we lease, we'll have to identify them as a liability as well. So they're just bringing that to our attention. And also, we do have various long-term obligations, whether it is, whether it is employee compensated absence, our employee compensated absences, for example, and a whole host of other issues that they just recommend we keep an eye on as well. They want us, they want us, they want us in the town treasurer to continue looking at ways to generate investment income. And also with the ARPA funds that are before us too, they point out that if we spend over $750,000 in a given year, we will have a single audit. So the seven, so the hundred, so the $790,000, but for 207 Main Street, next year, that will force us into a single audit. You know, that was always expected and anticipated. So that is what it is. Now in the findings, they, but they note, they have noted a complete turnover in the town's financial team. And they've recommended that we work as a team and organize as a team. I want to have everything documented and all the documentation laid out as well. So, so that is, so that is the first finding when the auditors were in. There were three pieces of information that they weren't able to get. So, 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 yeah, that is that issue. So, also, 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 also under the, also under the state capitol nanny reimbursement process, we, we in the past few years have been a year behind submitting those reimbursements. So they recommend that we, and the highway superintendent, get a hold of that as well. We've had issues in previous years where $40 performance bond were allowed to carry over. We have a number of them and they recommend, and they have recommended we clean that up as well. They, they, they have, they have a comment on, they've commented on, they've commented on our police detail, they've commented on our police detail, like our police detail aging issue, which has been an issue for the last three years. Oh, my God. Excuse me. Like also with our new town accountant, we made progress there already. I've talked about our capital assets. But we have, we have a really strong need to move to biweekly payroll as a town. So they mentioned that. They have mentioned, they have mentioned accounting issue we had with one of our grins at the end of FY '21 that was caused by our prior town accountant. And they, and they have also commented on our existing HR structure, which we're already working to address. So, so those are all the comments, but... So, so, oh, my God, I wish I could talk. But we already have a plan to, like, address them as proposed by the town accountant. And so that is that. But I'm happy to take any questions. Sorry about that. Geez. That was awful.
As I look at the audit, and they list areas that we need to work on, is an action plan something that could be presented to us six months, three months?
I, I, yeah, absolutely. Like with periodical updates, so when we have the field auditors back next January, we'll have them already addressed. So, yeah, so, yeah, I think to keep us on track, you know, having updates, having updates every three months so we can report back on the progress, you know, is definitely healthy and needed.
In the recommendations, are there any fiscal concerns that the town may have trying to meet and address these issues?
Not at this point, but the biweekly payroll may cause us to, the biweekly payroll, the biweekly payroll may have us, the biweekly payroll, the biweekly payroll may force us to look at updated payroll software, which we, which we actually have a meeting on. Oh, excuse me, before the end of the week, this week, so we can get a jump on that. So that might be the additional resource that we may need, but it's unclear at this point, Mr. Chairman.
In having spoken to both the accountant and the new town treasurer, both of which come from private industry, both have a very objective view based on the fact that they're coming from the outside in looking at our system. in looking at our system and what we have. And I say this in preparation of what is coming down the pipe. There is a major need for software upgrades in payroll, in the accounting office, and the treasurer's office as well. We're in the 21st century, and it will streamline the day-to-day operations, which in a sense could reduce man-hours and save us money in the long run. It will provide more transparency and a lot more efficiency. Are there any, Mr. Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the police detail aging. That's been brought to our attention in the past. When do we think that's going to be rectified?
I want to bring that back up because what actually happened in January during our audit is the town accountant actually helped to provide a detailed aging list, which we haven't had for the two years prior. So that is progress. But also in her update, she said, "I have been working closely with the police chief's administrative assistant to reconcile the police detail aging account. In the accounting office, we have created a spreadsheet to track the payment of details through payroll and the collection of receipts through department attorneys. This spreadsheet will be sent to the police chief's administrative assistants monthly to reconcile outstanding balances." So she already has that plan. And going into our FY '22 audit, we're optimistic that that will take it off the list after three years at this point. So that is... Yeah, that is very encouraging, but it's also been very frustrating as well. And I think we're finally gonna have that ability to get that under wraps.
Thank you.
I have a question for Chief. Software upgrade help in that?
It does.
Okay. You comfortable with what you have, or do you need something?
I like what the town administrator said. He's working with us, excuse me, the town accountant's been really fantastic. Like, we've changed accountants. The town of Towns, we've been through like three of them. So the one we had before was doing it this way. The next one was doing it this way. Now we have the new one. She's been great. She's been working with the town administrator, the lieutenant. So it's starting to get to where it should be. It's a lot better than it was before, I can tell you.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year '21 audited financial statements and management letter.
Aye, so move.
Second it, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda, review discuss an Act 201,124, Community Compact Cabinet Municipal Fiber Grant Acceptance. Mr. Mullin?
Yes, so about... I want to say it was about five to six weeks ago now, we updated you and the town that the town has applied for... had applied for a $200,000 grant to connect all the public safety communications through fiber with TMLP. And I'm very proud to report that we have been awarded the $200,000 grant to do just that. So we found out about this a week ago. We'll be able to connect through fiber, the PD, through Station 1 and over to Station 2 as well. So this will be really helpful in their work, you know, in their public safety efforts as well. We had a lot of help also from TMLP on this. And this is very, very exciting. You know, over the last year, this brings us to almost a million dollars in grant funding to update our infrastructure for things like this. And this is just, I mean, you know, it's an example of the emphasis that we do place on grant funding to help achieve our needs. You know, and to have these type of projects funded, but funded not through the budget process and through the tax rate, which is even more important. So yeah, I'm really excited about this, and I would recommend that we accept the grant.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I just want to thank all those that participated in trying to get this grant for the town. Once again, it's a good example of people working together to get some money for the town.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin, I do have a question. Mr. Pacheco spoke of all the people who participated in writing this grant. Besides yourself, who else was involved?
So the team included myself, the fire chief, the building commissioner, the police lieutenant as well, and Ken Bell from TMLP.
Was Dr. Zagoffis a part of this too?
No, we started this actually in early April.
Mr. Pacheco, would you be okay in support of a motion to place a letter of accommodation and thanks for the efforts of these individuals working towards this grant?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we send a letter thanking those... Well, actually, who's going to write the letter? Because Mr. Mullin's going to be sending a letter to himself also?
So yeah, no, I don't write letters to myself. I'll leave myself out.
That's okay.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we send a letter to all those that have participated and helped us with getting this grant and thanking them for their efforts.
I will second that. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I will entertain a motion to accept the $201,124 CCC municipal fiber grant and authorize town administrator Mullin to sign contract documents.
Aye, so move.
Second it, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda is the Fire Chief Employment Contract Memorandum of Agreement. Mr. Mullin?
Yes, I'm just gonna pull it up for public certification, but last week we met with the fire chief in executive session, but to discuss ambiguous language in his employment contract with the town. We had a conversation with him. And in the MOA, we're seeking to clarify that language that we have before you this evening, Mr. Chairman. And the language specifically deals with a 2.5% increase in his base pay for having his associate's degree and also an increase in his EMT stipend. For your consideration.
Thank you. By a vote taken by the Board of Selectmen at their executive session meeting of May 18, 2022, the contract language in Fire Chief's employment contract shall be amended to read as follows for Section E, Compensation, Paragraph 1.
I'm sorry about that, I just muted Chuck.
Beginning on July 1, 2020, McGee shall...
Chuck tried to unmute himself.
...shall receive an annual salary of $109,732.33 payable in weekly installments on the same day as other employees of the town are paid. effective July 1, 2022, McGee shall receive the following annual amounts: An emergency management director stipend of $4,000. McGee shall also receive a 2.5% increase in base pay for his associate's degree and $4,500 for his EMT basic designation to align with the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Dayton and the Dayton firefighters local 4332 for the remainder of said contract. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into this memorandum of agreement with the fire chief.
Aye, so move.
I will second it, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Mr. Pacheco, I'm going to ask that we suspend the order of business. Mrs. Mello is here this evening not only to give a report on COVID-19, which she did at 7 o'clock, but she is also here representing the Board of Health as we go forward with the establishment of a solid waste committee. Ms. Mello, could you come up to the podium at this time? Mr. Pacheco, would you entertain that motion?
I'll make a motion that on the new business agenda, item number 14J, that we advance that and skip over the others at this time.
I will second that motion, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Before we begin, I need to inform the public that Mr. Peter Karen has entered the meeting via Zoom and will be participating in all further voting on articles or issues that should come up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, Peter, are you there? Could you hear us? And can you identify yourself as participating, please? Oh, he is logging. Peter, would you be able to identify yourself for the record that you're here and participating remotely?
He's got to unmute himself.
Peter, would you be able to unmute yourself? So he's on, but I'll send him a message, so...
Yeah, okay, I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, thank you.
Welcome back to the United States.
Thank you, we just landed. But it's good to be home.
At the last meeting of the...
So you want to dive right in?
Yes, we are currently discussing the proposed composition and the creation of Solid Waste Committee.
Right.
And I attended the last Board of Health meeting. And at that meeting, it became very clear with all the new state and federal regulations coming down in regulating solid waste and its removal and its disposal, that it would cost the town of Dayton a lot of money in additional staff to deal with the regulations, to deal with the bidding that would need to go out on different contracts, to supervise and make sure that products that are coming in are legal, that people wouldn't be taking mattresses and leaving them on the side of the road. So the need is certainly there for a good relationship with the Board of Health, communicating, advertising through social media, the need to work with us so that we keep the town beautiful, but also comply with federal and state law. Well, we're very fortunate in this town that we have a lot of volunteers. And I use the example of the Dayton Industrial Development Committee, that we have a group that is saving the town of Dayton a lot of money and may bring in a lot of money. And how they're saving money is that some of the people on that committee do urban planning for a living, and they're volunteering their time, knowing fully well that an urban planner would have cost the city of the town of Dayton $90,000-plus dollars. So in the case of solid waste, the need to form this committee is very crystal clear. All of these members would be volunteers. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Mello.
I believe the health agent is on as well, if he has anything to add in regards to... But can I grab my paper from the packet? So as proposed in the packet, it had nine members: One Board of Health representative, the health agent, a Board of Selectmen representative, the town administrator, transportation attendant, highway superintendent, building commissioner, and then two Dayton residents-at-large members. Bring us to nine.
I am here.
Mr... Welcome. Mr. Pillings, is there something you would like to add that Nicole and I missed?
Well, the only other recommendation, as we kicked it around at our last board meeting, is that perhaps a member of the finance committee should be on this subcommittee.
The bylaw won't allow it though, Todd. So we have a general bylaw that prohibits a member of the FINCOM from serving in any other capacity except for the FINCOM?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any questions? Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
No, so we're looking for nine members to join as of tonight?
Yes, not just the positions. We would be approving the positions, not the individuals. There will be a process. The Board of Health will make a vote and send a recommendation to us, as will the Board of Selectmen at a later meeting. And then the Solid Waste Committee will interview residents-at-large and send a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for final approval, since the Board of Health is not an elected body.
Right. No, I think it's a great idea. And I'd certainly like to see Jean Aguerre participate in some form because he's the stomach of everything. I think we approach him as well.
Mr. Aguerre is truly a wonderful asset to this town.
But no, I have no other comments. I think it's a great idea and we should go forward.
Thank you very much. With that in mind, I will entertain a motion to establish the Solid Waste Committee under the direction of the Board of Health. These terms will run for three years.
I'll make a motion that we establish a Solid Waste Committee, and those members will be Board of Health Member Representative, Health Agent, Board of Selectmen Representative, Town Administrator, Transport Station Attendant, Highway Superintendent, Building Commissioner, and two Dyton residents-at-large.
Mr. Karen?
I second that.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, returning back to the regular order. On April 30th, 2022, there was an incident on Massasoit Road in Dyton that I would like to read into the record for further discussion and possible vote. On May 1st, on Sunday, May 1st, 2022, Board of Selectmen Chairman Leonard Hull made me aware of a public safety incident and a response that took place on or around the private property located at Zero Milk Street, map seventeen, lot 208, during the evening of Friday, April 29th, 2022. I also learned that there was a subsequent minor motor vehicle accident around the same time in the cul-de-sac of Massasoit Road, and that a neighborhood resident reached out to Chairman Hull regarding the public safety response and neighborhood disturbance. During the early morning of May 2nd, 2022, I... this... Chair... uh, Town Administrator Mullen met with Building Commissioner James Agia at the location. We spoke with Chief McDonald, who is present here this evening, and Chief McGee about the incident to further ascertain accompanying public safety responses. I have also since spoken with Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry about the incidents as well. At various times in recent years, the town has offered its assistance to help to gate off certain areas to undeveloped land from the Council Oak neighborhood as a way to help address public safety risks and neighborhood disturbances. As a result of the April 29th, 2022 incidents, in an effort to respond to the matter brought to the town's attention, an informal verbal offer was made by town officials to help gate off an area owned by the Council Oak Homeowners Association at the end of Massasoit Road. The offer would be subject to written approval from the Homeowners Association, the Board of Selectmen, and any applicable private landowners. At this time, the town has received... Uh, we look forward to further discussing this issue with the Board of Selectmen, HOA representatives, neighbors, and applicable town departments. At this time, I am opening this meeting up to, um, public comment. And I am going to hear from all parties. I also have, um, a letter that I will... A couple of letters that I will read into the record. Dear Members of the Board of Selectmen, Through conversations with my neighbor Tim Toulon, 1943 Massasoit Road, and Selectman Leonard Hull, I have learned of a request paid by Mr. Toulon to the Board to erect a gate at the end of Massasoit Road on land that is owned by the Council Oak Estates Trust. Our understanding is that the proposed gate would be installed and paid for by the town. After reaching out to all homeowners within the Council Oak Estate neighborhood, I have received no objections to this proposal. On behalf of the Council Oak Estates Trust, I grant permission for the Town of Dyton to construct the gate on the trust-owned land. I received feedback strongly in favor of the gate proposal from several residents on Massasoit Ave. and Council Oak Way who expressed concern and frustration over the explosion of activity in the wooded area behind Massasoit Ave., which they say has spilled over onto the streets in front of their homes. It is believed that putting this gate in place will eliminate unpermitted car and traffic access to this area from Massasoit Ave., which will be a significant first step in addressing this problem. Thank you for your willingness to work with my neighbors and I on this. Feel free to contact me if you need anything further to move forward. Your... very truly yours, Michael Grady, Council Oak Estates Trust. I look out in the audience, and I see that Mr. Grady and Mr. Toulon are present. Mr. Grady, could you come before... to the microphone? First question I have is, could you state for the record your name, your address, and what role you serve on the Council Oak Estate Trust?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Michael Grady. I'm a resident of 2,000 Manomet Avenue. And I am currently, um, elected trustee as... to the position of secretary on the Council Oak Estate Trust.
And currently, you also serve as...
Yeah, by default, I'm also serving as the treasurer and the president due to, um, uh, due to those positions being filled by neighbors who had moved out of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Could you explain what your concerns are? And, um, what you'd like to see done to address this issue?
No, I think we're very encouraged by the town's reaction in response to the most recent issues out in the pit area, in the wooded area behind, um, uh, Massasoit Ave. and Manomet. The proposal to have a gate built at the end of Massasoit is something we're very much in favor, in favor of, mainly because it's going to prohibit car and truck traffic going off the road off the end of the cul-de-sac. I've gotten feedback from six or seven different residents, some very strongly in favor of that, especially with regard... I got three responses from homeowners on Massasoit, and they're especially passionate about the issue. So, um, we'd do anything to help move it along and move forward.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I also have a letter that I would like to read into the record from Tim Toulon, who is also a member of the Council Oak Trust. I am writing to request that the town government erect a gate at the end of Massasoit Road to prevent unauthorized cars and trucks from driving into the pits behind my home. There have been bonfires and a great deal of traffic in my neighborhood as a result of these gatherings. As a resident of the neighborhood, I am concerned with traffic, underage drinking, litter, and the potential of a fire spreading through the wooded area, which would not only cause ecological damage, which could also put homes in the Council Oak neighborhood at risk. Mr. Toulon, do you have anything further you would like to add to this request? Thank you. Thank you. I also have before me a letter from, um, Mrs. Kelly A. Smathers, 741 Council Oak Way. We have the following questions. Is there an active homeowners association for our neighborhood? Can residents join an email list to stay informed? How can residents be invited to the conversation in a timely manner with town leadership, making a decision that will impact us all? Have HOA fees been collected in the past? What is the balance of those fees? Where is the count held? What is the possibility that fees will pick back up again? How are fees determined who is responsible for managing the HOA? And I think we've spoken about that tonight. Do you need help? Who might be the best person to seek guidance from? And Mr. Mullen has been involved in these discussions. Does the town offer information, support for local HOA groups? How can residents hire local businesses to care for easements, storm drains? Does the town have recommendations, contracts for vetted local businesses? What can be done in collaboration to address concerns related to large fires on adjacent private property? Littering beer cans, glass bottles, cigarette butts, vegetation and wildlife management, history preservation, education, community engagement, unauthorized use of dirt bikes, ATVs, off-road vehicles, risk of underage consumption of alcohol, drinking, and driving on adjacent property? Mrs. Smathers, in reviewing all these items, you have made it clear that there are many questions that we do not have answers for because there are many boards that are involved in this. This is certainly something that we need to look at in more detail and come back with appropriate answers because there are many HOAs in this town, and many people, I'm sure, have the... also have questions. Recently, a bonfire took place in the woods behind Council Oak Way, commonly referred to as the pit. Mrs. Smathers continues. A local hangout for young adults. The wooded area behind Council Oak Way is privately owned. Past attempts to reduce the presence of dirt bikes, ATVs, and the like have drastically improved. However, the presence of bonfires, littering continues at infidium. A new gate will not solve these issues. As a resident and parent, my greatest fear is that something terrible or dangerous will happen back in the pits with these kids. Well, all I'll say, I knew something was wrong out there. I wish I had done more. While I admit there's an emotional fear driving much of this action, there are real impacts at stake. Generations, long stories of disputes, conflict, and hearsay have had the following impact: Reduced confidence and trust that local enforcement is capable of identifying risk, spotting appropriately without being informed by the community; Fear that any reports made to police will not be held in confidence; Fear of retaliation calling in reporting activity going in the pit. Put simply, residents have expressed they are less likely to report suspicious activity out of the belief that their names, information will be shared with those on adjacent private property. It would be beneficial to organize a socially-distanced, preferable outdoor meeting set up where residents can go with town leaders to further discuss, make introductions, and identify next steps. Thank you for your public service and collaborative engagement. Mrs. Smathers, um, could you come to the podium? If you would like?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Smathers. Is this... Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, great. Hi.
In reading this, there is definitely a need to have a meeting. I think what will happen is, working with Town Administrator Mullen, the Board of Selectmen will organize, and this meeting will take place. I'm not exactly sure where. One of the things to be necessary, working with Mr. Grady, is numbers and the scope of it. Because what this does is open up many questions from, I'm sure, other HOAs that are out there. So, we need to strategize for the location and an agenda.
Agreed.
The second issue, I have been...
I'm sorry. Real quick, would it be possible to show the email on the screen? Thank you. I don't have a printout of it. It's small on my phone, but... Oh, that's a helpful map, though.
Do you want...
There you go.
Oh, if you have a printout, thank you.
That's yours.
Thank you.
Do you want the map?
The map is... Yeah, thanks.
In reviewing your letter, I just want to add that I've lived in that neighborhood since 1985.
Oh, that's the year I was born, Len.
This has been a long-going issue with the pits, long before the houses were built there. And I can tell you... And Mr. McDonald may remember this. And I remember the incident... the individuals in Taunton who were involved. We had some things a lot worse than what you have experienced out there in the pits. And I can say this with certainty because some of the students in Taunton who were involved were former students of mine. So, I heard it from the Dyton parents who came to me, pleading with me to reach out to those students. And there was a major incident that happened at DI as a result of something that carried over from the pits. There is definitely a need for more of a police presence. And I'm going to talk to Mr. McDonald, Chief McDonald, for his input on this. But on this issue of people being afraid, I think this is an issue where people, the police, Board of Selectmen, and the residents can put their heads together and come up with a plan so that the identity of those who have concerns can be protected and that those concerns can be addressed. Mrs. Smathers?
Thank you, Len.
Thank you.
As... but, you know, the... The folks who were invited to speak before, if it's okay, if I could take a little bit of time and just provide context for those who may not... may have not been on the email chain?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the idea. This is a... Before we vote, this is obviously public forum.
Okay. I'm learning.
We want everyone that is here or on Zoom to feel that they can express their opinion.
Thank you. I do want to address that, Mike, I want to thank you, too, for being nothing but transparent and helpful and answering questions as the head of our HOA. As a young mom and a relatively new homeowner, my husband and I chose Dyton. We methodically visited homes, and we chose to live in Dyton because of certain factors. And it's no secret or mystery that I've been less than enchanted with the experience of moving in. And I will say that it's not unique to my experience. I think many of us feel isolated now more than ever. And I am interested only in working with you to find that common ground and working from there. We have many differences in town, but I will say that I'm from the state of Delaware, as is my husband. We're very used to healthy debate. As the state of... My home state is 100 miles long. The top half votes blue, the bottom half votes red. Very used to healthy discussion and debate. We'd like a seat at the table. It's been my experience in the two years that I've lived on Council Oak Way that I've not been invited to conversations or, I believe the phrase of the, informal discussions that have taken place to make decisions that impact us all. I'm in no way in opposition to a gate. However, this is the second gate that's been erected in my time living on Council Oak Way. And we may deter teenagers for a while, but they will find another way. I remember what it was like to be young, and it's not my interest to involve the police. I don't believe that we can arrest our way out of this problem or that we can surveil or be an authority out of teenagers needing a safe space to have fun and be kids. And they have less and less space to do that. It's not my interest to ruin a good thing. I think they're doing that on their own. And I've said that, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want to be that parent who's ruining, you know, something that teenagers have been enjoying for the past, I don't know, 40, 50 years or more. When I dropped my kids off at daycare, the director told me that she used to hang out in the pit in the 90s. And her mother used to tell her and all the girls, "Don't go to the pit with those boys." Now, that might be funny and nostalgic for some of you. As a woman in this country, I assure you that that deeply concerns me. And those stories of things that went on in the pit, they far exceed any laughter or jokes. And as a mother, I can't help but feel that we owe our kids more. In light of recent events, I have to say, I can't ignore what's happening in the social climate of our country right now. And I just have to say. And I just have to say, I have to take this opportunity to say this. It is my unpopular opinion that increased police presence in our public schools does anything but make me, as a parent, feel safe. When I see police cars at schools, I am alarmed. And for the Dayton police to start their social media post off with, "Don't be alarmed," or, you know, "Don't be alarmed to see this presence," I've seen so many social media posts coming from not just Dayton police, but many police departments, Somerset, Berkeley, Rehoboth, and the like. The same message, and I know that the intention is good. But as a parent, as someone who grew up in a time where I was in 7th grade when Columbine happened, I was in 10th grade when 9/11 happened, I watched 9/11 happen from a television screen in my classroom. I am watching today's youth be desensitized and traumatized all over again, and if we're giving them High Five Fridays in elementary and middle school but randomized canine searches by the time they're in high school, I need to understand where that disconnect is between where they become, where they go from being allies to local law enforcement to suspects. I have two small children. They're ages one and three. I chose to live in Dayton. I chose to buy my first house here in my forever home. I chose to bring our second baby home here. And I'm terrified, and I don't feel safe. And I'm looking to leadership to help me unpack that. It is complicated, and it's going to take a lot more than just one conversation. My heart is beating out of my chest. I'm having a really hard time finding a high road on social media and otherwise, but I will keep showing up to the table, and I will keep trying to listen more than I talk. But I can't be heard if I'm not offered a seat at the table to which I'm owed. It is my right as a taxpayer to have my voice heard, and whether you erect a gate or I'm opposed or unopposed, I deserve a right to have a say-so. And we, and the kids that are partying back there deserve more than us just gating them off.
I, I just...
With that, I don't want to keep going. I don't want to do this. I don't want to spend time away from my family to come here and explain this. I wish I could just unload it and give you an email, and we could get to work on it. But I understand it's more complicated than that. I had the, I will end with this. I swear to God, I will sit down and shut up. I had the pleasure of meeting Roger and Donna, I don't know how to pronounce their last name, I'm sure you know exactly who I'm talking about. I have it written down, sorry. Des Rosier?
Sure, I know that.
Roger and Donna Des Rosier, they owned a gift shop in Somerset. Roger was involved with the land of the Council Oak tree behind my house.
Oh, yes, yes.
Roger reached out to me, we spoke on the phone for about three and a half hours. A hearty conversation about our intentions and how we plan to, excuse me, get together to mostly address this last core of issues. It is our intention, and we've created a political action committee, the Council Oak Civic Association, or COCA for short, as a non-connected PAC, has been registered with the FEC, and we plan to take this action to fund and support our efforts for land preservation and work together with your leadership and your guidance to solve these issues beyond just a gate.
Many things to be said.
Thank you.
First of all, with me, it's not red-blue. You have two neighbors. One is red, and one is blue.
I'm going to have a seat.
And I enjoy working with Mr. Pacheco, and we have common ground in that we both live in the same neighborhood. And we want people in the town of Dayton to be safe. We want people in the town of Dayton to enjoy their neighborhood. The issue of finding a place for the ATV people is a battle that has been going on for years, and it's been very difficult. And unfortunately, the town, for liability reasons, can't be a part of that. There was an individual many years ago who tried to provide an area for the students, people, not just students, to come and use the ATVs and their mini bikes, and they had ended up having problems with the neighbors.
Challenge accepted.
One of the things that will definitely happen, either when the HOA has their meetings or when your political action committee has an organized meeting, I would ask that you invite one of your two neighbors, because you can't invite us both because it's a meeting, Mr. Pacheco or myself, to your meeting.
You want a party, Len?
I'm sorry?
You want a party, Len?
It's about making people feel a part of the town.
Inclusion is one of my core values.
You're going to hear me speak about that later on this evening. I totally agree with you. This is not politics with me. It really sincerely, you know, I know I'm affiliated with the Republican Party, but this is not my number-one priority of the citizens of Dayton. One, there is going to be, as we said, a joint meeting, as you have asked, so we can talk about, identify the issues, and come up with a plan. Because some of those issues, like we got the whole situation with the Council Oak and what has happened over the years there. You know, what steps have been made by the town to reach out to environmental, the environmental police? How often do they patrol back there? You know, what type of community watch can be established? What can the police department do not to create a police-threatening environment there but to keep things honest? I'm hoping that, you know, when your political committee gets going, and I would ask, that you, you mentioned that you have a certificate from... Could you go to Town Hall and give a copy of that to the town clerk?
If they could provide our committee, yes. There's this...
That's okay, so that you will be recognized as a political action committee.
Just that's enough.
Okay. And that will add credibility to your group.
Thank you.
Chief McDonald.
I just want to talk about the pits and the issues that we've had there for a long time. It's been a long time that we've had problems there. And then I'll also talk about the night of that issue that happened up there on April 29th, I'm saying, right? So, as far as the, that area, okay, and believe me, I hear your issues about problems up there. I know, I understand things that you're dealing with over there. This has been a long, long time, problems there. Before that development, those houses were even there. It was just the pits, and that's it. And we've had issues there. There are some times that it's quiet there, and then sometimes we get complaints of, first, dirt bikes, okay? We always get complaints about dirt bikes, four-wheelers in there. And when we get them, they're not even from town. They're from forever, New Bedford, Somerset. So, these kids are coming from, I mean, there's Dayton kids too in there, believe me, I'm not going to say there's not. But there's a lot of out-of-towners that come here. So, I don't know if you've noticed that on Brook Street, there's signs over there, "No parking." The reason those signs are there is because what happens is people came from out of town, they would park their trailers there, bring two or three four-wheelers, take them off the trail, leave their cars, and go riding in the pits, and then they come back out. So, we put signs there. That seems to help a little bit. As far as getting in that development, they get in everywhere. They get in through the Massasoit Road, they get in through the water department on Brook Street. I don't know if you know, it's called Sansons, it used to be called Sansons Farm on Elm Street. They go down there. The kids are going to find ways of getting in there, and they just do. Everybody said that. It's been going on for, it's been going on since the 70s, I can tell you right now. I started 1980, and we were dealing with kids in that pit. So, you know, is it right? No, it's not. And the thing is, I believe there's different people that own that land in, out there. So, we really don't know. Certain parts of this owner, certain parts of this owner, certain parts of that owner. So, it's not just one person owns the place. So, as far as signs, I don't know if they've put signs out there. I heard there has been some signs out there. Some parts don't have, no trespassing signs. So, if there's no signs out there, you really, you can't, it's not a lot you can do then. It's got to be posted, for one. The kids are just going out there, and I, like I said, I feel, you know, bad for you guys because you live out there, and you don't need to, you don't need to deal with that, that stuff, okay? Hunting season, during hunting season, different owners own parts of that, they give permission to different people to go hunting for the, how many months that the hunting is. So, those guys are out there hunting because they have permission from these owners that they can hunt there. So, we can't, we can't kick them out. The owners give them the permission to hunt. You know, and as far as the incident that took place on the 29th, a call came into the business line at the fire department. They got the call of a possible fire, I guess, in the pit, someone could see it. The fire department took the call, they ended up calling communications, 911 operators, told them that they were responding to a fire out in the pits. Fire department gets out there, our guys get, go respond, but they don't go out in the pits, they go over Massasoit Road over there. When they get there, there's probably a half dozen cars there. Two guys that I had on, one was a supervisor, and that was a patrolman. They get there, there was kids already out there. When they got out of the car, they said that one of the kids got in a fender bender, they hit another car. Wasn't a lot of damage, but they kind of exchanged papers, spoke to the kids and said, "What are you doing?" And a couple of the kids responded and said, "I'm at my friend's house," okay? They didn't say anything about being in the pits or anything. They both spoke to all, the kids, how many kids were there? I don't know exactly how many kids were there. They spoke to them, they didn't seem impaired, like they'd been drinking. They had no indication of that. They spoke to the kids, they told them, you know, you need to leave, and they left. So, if they were impaired or they had any type of alcohol in their breath, these two officers were there, would have never let them drive away. I know, I know they wouldn't. They wouldn't, they wouldn't do that. So, that's, that was that night. As far, as far as a gate that has been brought up, that could be a possibility of maybe stopping it from down there, but they're still going to get in there no matter what, anywhere around, Brook Street, Elm Street. And believe me, if you see cars down there, and the guys that live down there, and you start to see cars building up and kids are in there, or just several cars going in there because there's no reason for them to be in there unless they live down there, if you start seeing cars, please call us. We will, we respond, we respond, do the best we can to prevent something that's going to take place or it's happening, and the guys will do their job. They're not going to let things go like that. I mean, that's something that they will not do. And I know, I know your issues down there, and it's been going on for a long time, and I feel for you, I know, I know. I wouldn't want that either, if I lived down there either. But, you know, we'll do the best we can to help you guys. Whatever you need, please, call. Call, call Lieutenant Cronin, call me, call the supervisor sergeants that are on the shift. We want you to do that. We're here to help you. If we can help you in any way, we want to do that, you know? You know, it's too bad, I mean, like I said, I can't remember, there was no house, there wasn't even nothing there. It was just the pits, that's it. And then people, you know, came in and people, you know, trying to make a nice place to stay, and Dayton is a great town, but you don't need to deal with that either. Kids going in there, you know, kids are kids, they're going to, they want to do things like that. I get it, but, you know, not there. I mean, so like I said, if you, if you need something, please call us. We'll do the best we can to help you. That's what we're here for.
Chief, I have a question. Fish and game, environmental police, do they coordinate their efforts with your office?
They do. They'll, they'll, sometimes, they'll go out there, if we start getting complaints of, like, especially hunters and the four-wheelers. We get that all the time. They'll go out there because they have their four-wheeler, they go out there, and they'll go out there, and they've written people up out there. Yeah, they have.
Could you, could you speak to them?
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, we are having some issues.
They're very good with us, they work with us. We call them, they come right out. So, you know...
We are going to schedule a meeting, put together an action plan.
Sure. I think that's a good idea.
And we'll be coming back to have further discussions on this matter.
If you need, please, please call, okay? We're here, we're here to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Before I entertain a motion on the request for the gate, I have an additional letter that I'd like to read into the record from Jason Quinn. Mr. Quinn is a resident of Dayton and lives, I believe, on Massasoit Street. I am writing this email in support of putting a gate at the end of the cul-de-sac on Massasoit Ave in the Council Oak development. As I understand, it is on the agenda this evening. Over the past several years, the residents of the neighborhood have been very patient with the folks using the fields and pits as potty places. We've dealt with trash, beer cans, bottles, late-night parties, and bonfires, loud trucks coming in and out of the fields, U-Haul trucks dropping off dirt bikes, and parking in the cul-de-sac in general disregard of our neighborhood. The last incident a couple of weeks ago was the last straw. Several cars and trucks driving back in the fields and parking in the street while having a huge bonfire during a dry spell and the winds blowing 20 miles per hour. Dayton PD was called and came to break up the potty. Thankfully, they did, but not one citation for the folks that were there illegally. One person was trying to flee the scene in their vehicle and actually hit another car. I, I also plan on reaching out to the Somerset Water District. I might add that Mr. Quinn is a member of the Dayton Water District, and we, and they have a very good relationship with the Somerset Water District. To see if I can persuade them to close or barricade all other entries on the Brook Street side of the property. If there's anything else I can do, please feel free to reach out. I have also attached some pictures and a video of the fire from the night in question. I believe Mr. Marlin has that video. Is that correct, Mr. Marlin? Yes. Mrs. Smathers, I want to point out that people coming together, working together, as Mr. Quinn has done on his own, is the type of action that I think we could come to a positive solution to this problem. And we will pursue that meeting so we can put our heads together, certainly.
Happy to follow this up with an email to recap, but just have a couple of, I don't know if this is the proper place to make suggestions or requests for information for the people that live on those streets to make informed decisions. Can we ask for certain information in this forum? Knowing that I won't, okay, let me just say, can we, can I request a map of, an understanding of who owns what?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we can help with that.
Yes.
Okay, so who owns what is something that I think that we would need in preparation for the, for the Homeowners Association meeting that is scheduled TBD. For hunting season, that's actually the first time I'm hearing that. We've heard shots fired in relatively close range, but understanding that the ballistics, there's, it's hard to tell exactly where. there's, it's hard to tell exactly where it may be coming from, even though it may sound very close. There have been several instances where we've heard shots fired and it ended up being target practice at Dayton Police. But it's incredibly difficult to distinguish whether or not there may be, I mean, I've asked on Facebook, "Hey, Dayton Police, are you doing target practice today?" I've heard shots fired and they've responded, "Yes, we are doing target practice today."
Usually shoot there. They usually shoot at
But we've been hearing it. So understanding that while I might not know where the shots are coming from, hearing them in close range, even though they may sound closer, it was actually the police department doing safety drills or firing. So there's that. But understanding that within hunting season, that I may, I may hear shots fired and think, "Oh, that's the police department," when really there might be someone hunting nearby while I'm up there with my children. Right? So fair concern. I think a map would help there. I think that the collective conversation beyond the scope of the homeowners association should include every property owner that would be potentially liable. Let's just pretend something terrible happened back there. Who would be brought into court? Right? That's how I'm looking at it. Because the way I, the way I see it, across from my driveway is an access point to a space where we know illegal activity happens all the time for generations. And there's been no solution. So I'm looking at it from a sense of, we can't arrest our way out of it. You can't keep kids out of it. I think our HOA mic has, what, $3,500 bucks? Give or take. Maybe we could use our $3,500 bucks and install some Ring cams. I don't know. But again, it's a seat at the table to talk through creative solutions instead of being told what hasn't worked.
Correct.
And I think that that conversation must be continued beyond the scope of an upcoming HOA meeting.
That's why I had asked if we could also meet with the political action committee.
So, I'm sorry, let me make sure that I
The other committee.
You're asking for the Council Oak Civic Association to hold a separate, to hold separate meetings?
Well, it doesn't necessarily, I can't speak for the HOA. If they wanna come and have a joint meeting, that's between the two groups. But I wanna hear from both groups.
No, I get, I think what, I think what I'm asking is like, who owns what? Like, not just in terms of the actual land, but in a figurative sense, like action items wise.
Mr. Mullen will be able to provide that for you.
For the HOA piece, but I think what I'm, what I'm asking for is a little bit more guidance and support from a town leadership perspective to kind of own that and own the mental labor, if that makes sense, of organize. It takes time and energy to organize people.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have it.
I'm happy to help bring together, oh, you know, all the town departments, the highway department. Oh, you know, has a seat at the table. They've long been involved in this issue as well. But the police sent fire to but so together with the HOA, we could have that meeting. Oh, yeah, like have the meeting on who owns what and how we can really figure this out.
Okay.
So, yeah, happy to help facilitate that.
I think what I'm asking for is someone to own it. Because, you know, the political action committee, it's not necessarily our goal and mission to preserve the pit. Like, you know, that's, I'm
Before we can do anything, before we can come up with an action plan, we need to hear ideas and concerns, or concerns and ideas. And that's why
On that, yep.
How, which way we do it, a joint meeting or two separate meetings, to hear people's concerns and get their ideas of what they think we could do to solve a common problem.
If they're roughly, would you say, you had mentioned, Lenny, that there are at least, you have said several HOEs involved in this matter.
No, no, no.
Who have a stake in the game, right?
In the town.
Who are impacted.
They have never, ever come up, come before us with concerns. I am sure after this evening, some of them may come before us with concerns that they have, which are unique to their own particular neighborhoods.
Yep, it would be beneficial to have some HOA resources in the town libraries. Yeah, I agree. In the meantime, while we're working on that, if we look at the map, because I'm still very unclear on the five parcels of land that are within our HOA trust. Just understanding from like an aerial perspective, where those parcels of land or where those property lines are, are they marked?
Mr. Mullen can give you that information, but I just wanna say this. There's one group here that we need to reach out, that needs, and I'm gonna work very strongly towards this. It's one of my goals. It's the Native Americans.
Agreed.
And I want them part of this discussion.
Agreed.
I have an individual who is very good friends with a chief. And I had planned once we got by the annual town meeting, the budget, if you will, that we would be reaching out to them because we want them back at the table. We want them doing their cultural activities.
We humbly would accept their guidance at this point.
And we want, and if you know of any of the members, please reach out to them, make a connection and either share it with us. But when we have these discussions, because of the things that have happened up there that have impacted them negatively over the years, I definitely want to hear from them. I also want them to feel that they're a part of the process.
Agreed, that the native folks that were here before us have fought diligently to preserve the land from being developed into more subdivisions. And not only saving what was left of the Council Oak, but the one that's beautifully there on our emblem, but have preserved acorns and grown new Council Oak trees and planted one. It's incredible, the efforts that have gone quietly.
People in this town don't even know about that.
And they prefer it that way. But as, as a property owner, as somebody, from my position, I am in a position to perhaps learn and help others to get more involved. Because as I said, I know I'm not from here. And that's a constant barrier that I, that I come against, meeting new people. It's like, oh, well, she's not from here. She doesn't even go here. It's like, if you're not local, no one cares what you have to say. But I just wanna counter that with the fact that I chose to live here. So if we could figure out who owns what and have, I just need to, if I'm gonna take on the mental labor and the actual, the time and the energy that I'm not getting paid to do outside of my full-time job and raising two small children and trying to show up as a wife and a non-reactive member of society, I need help. I need help to understand what the scope of the issue, of the people that are impacted, to all get together, preferably socially distanced, but if it means that we have to be in a high school auditorium.
Or a middle school.
We wanna keep the conversation going. There's a lot of interest here and a lot of people involved. So I look forward to making progress together, Len.
And I would encourage you to work closely with Mr. Grady and Mr. Toulon.
Well, we're good friends at this point, aren't we, boys?
And, you know, help to organize it and get some other people to help get the word out. And, you know, there are other ways, social media and some
Giving me homework assignments.
Um, flyers too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have before us a request for a gate at the end of the cul-de-sac on Massasoit Ave in the Council Oak Development. Do I have a motion for the town to establish the gate?
Yeah. Before we hear that motion, is, do you discuss it?
Oh, absolutely. That's Mr. Peter Karen. He is the third member of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Karen, yes?
Is, do you are we voting tonight whether not to put a gate there? Or is this maybe just all encompassing and we're going to form a committee with individual participants from different groups of society to come up with the best plan? And is that when the gate should be parted? Or we just gotta go solo and put a gate up?
At this time, the motion would be to, the request is for the town of Dayton to place a gate at the end of the cul-de-sac on Massasoit Avenue.
Okay, is it gonna be a breakaway gate?
Mr. Mullen, could you explain what the Dayton would intend?
So, yeah, Peter, and Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry is, Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry is on Zoom as well. But at this point, I would recommend if there is a willingness to, oh, you know, if there is a willingness to move forward with a gate, that we do sit down with the HOA because before, oh, yeah, we oh, is it? Oh, is it? Oh, is, oh, is it Tom put up a gate? We would wanna, oh, 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 but we would wanna check against easements. Oh, you any easements? Oh, any easements on the HOA property that go to the property in back? Like which, there was, oh, there was a small property, there's a small property owned by the HOA at the end of Massasoit. But then that turns into a property that is owned by Joe Mizony. And right in back of that is the property that turns in to the Philly Lodge property that is owned by Belfarm Estates. So I would just, so I would just, before we put a gate up, I would wanna make sure that the HOA property doesn't have any existing easements there. That, you know, we would also have to, also have to as part of our, also as part of our due diligence as well, we would have to have a, we would have to have a conversation with Belfarm Estates if there is an easement and also with Joe Mizony as well.
Right.
So I mean, at this point, we, you know, just wanted to get a sense from the board whether we should continue with the gate direction. But, you know, but I do think we, you know, have to have some type of an agreement with the HOA, you know, that deals with public safety access as well. You know, that deals with liability. But up until now, we were waiting to actually hear what, you know, exactly where the HOA wanted to go with this. So now that we know that answer, we can continue moving forward. You know, and work with them to check against easements. You know, and to also bring back an agreement to the full Board of Selectmen. That's what I would recommend at this point, if that is a will in the direction of the board.
Right. That needs to be the best alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, thank you. I don't know what this red and blue thing was that you had mentioned earlier. It's well-known, it's not a secret that I'm a Democrat, but when I come here, I don't vote as a Democrat. I don't let the Democratic Town Committee tell me how to vote. And I especially don't say one thing at one meeting, have a Democratic Town Committee tell me they don't like that and then go to the next meeting and talk differently. My question is, if the homeowners association is so concerned about putting a gate up, why aren't you guys paying for it? Why aren't you guys buying, putting that gate up yourself? Why are you asking the taxpayers to put up the gate?
I'd be happy to answer that.
Will you come up here, please?
I mean, Mr. Toulon.
Hi, Timothy Toulon, 1943, Massasoit Road. We've always had dirt bikes. We've always had quads. But when the Water District last year widened the road to look for water sources down there, that opened up the floodgates of cars and trucks going back there. So it's my perspective that the Water District and the Town of Dayton created the situation, they should pay for it.
So you should be going to the Water District then? Because it wasn't the Town of Dayton that opened up that road, it was the Water District.
So the Water District should pay for it.
That's not what I'm saying. I think if you have a concern about the pits, and I've lived on Milk Street for 35 years, that's been an ongoing problem. I do agree with Ms. Mathers that we should try to come up with a solution. I'm not convinced that a gate is gonna be the solution. But I'm gonna want the town to have any liability when it comes to putting up that gate. Anything should happen with the town, so I absolutely will not be asking the taxpayers to pay for this gate.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen? Hello, Mr. Karen?
I agree with Ken. And I'm not the one that likes to put Band-Aids on things. I like to see the, the project as a whole have a beginning and an end to it. Where we have an overall plan and not just one gate here, one gate there. Does anybody have any idea what a gate's gonna cost?
So Highway Superintendent, you're also on the Zoom. Do you want, do you want to shed light on this aspect of it? I know you've done some research as well. Tom, you have to unmute yourself. Oh, there we go.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I believe the total installation should be around $300, $350. I do caution that just throwing it up there is not the answer. We really need to have input, you know, for aesthetics, access, who has access. You're gaining off someone else's property also. I think, I think everyone's, is on the right path here. Let's talk this out. I like the idea, the gate should be taken under advisement and go that far tonight, but not install it. I also like to throw in consideration of changing our bylaws to have no parking on those two cul-de-sacs in that development. That will also help with the non-invited guests utilizing the woods other than just open space and the trails.
I have, I have a tendency to agree with that. I'm just concerned about drawing good money at bad, bad money. If this is group that's gonna get together, can they make recommendations? We could be putting up five gates and at a substantial cost. Maybe we'll see the discount because we wanna install five gates. But does the Water Department have any new responsibility with this?
So, to be honest with you, I'm not even sure why they were using it to, to X. Oh, and, okay. Yeah, I mean, it, you know, it's unclear. We have initially reached out to the Water District and I've been told that they weren't involved in expanding the pass. But I mean, that is obviously something that I want to, especially after tonight's discussion, I'm gonna wanna follow up with them again, you know, and get clarity on that issue.
So what if we set a timetable with this group to get back together again? Pick some people to be on this group, get a timetable so that, and I'm drafting a short timetable for that, a month, so that we can get together and work with a plan that will satisfy the people who want the gate now with cost figures and what else can be done. I think, I think to say this aspect of it, but I think Bob and his department are gonna have to be heavily involved in it. Because like you said, there's just gonna find another way of getting in.
I'm waiting for Mr. Pacheco before I ask for a vote.
Um, in the meantime, Highway Super- Um, in the meantime, Highway Superintendent Ferry, has he ended up?
Yes, Mr. Ferry.
Yes, uh, one other thing I, I meant to mention earlier, if everyone in this meeting tonight is in agreement, I can block that egress, either the granite blocks or Jersey Barrier, and/or those temporary police signs, you know, for the pole, that a vehicle cannot just easily access that with a temporary, um, no parking signs that we have for the police department. I, I, those two things I can't just do on my own, I, I just need a directive.
I, I like the idea that the Jersey Barriers is a temporary, uh, stop, which is, to determine what's gonna happen with the whole area.
I, 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 I do have a concern. On the Jersey Barriers, I totally agree. On the no parking, unless, Mr. Ferry, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't just put up no parking signs, uh, they're not enforceable, are they?
Uh, the temporary police notice ones, uh...
They are enforceable? Without...
Uh, I, I believe Mr. McDonald could expand on that more, but yes, I believe so.
Are, are they, would they need Board of Selectmen approval, or is that within the power of the police chief?
I, I believe under the chief's directions, they should be enforceable.
Okay.
The power of the selectmen, it comes on, that, that's a, I believe that's a bylaw change on it, the no parking zones in town.
Right. So, I, I'd rather stay away from that at this time, because, you know, making sure all our i, i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But on the issue of the Jersey Barrier, uh, Mr. Karen, how do you feel about that?
I'm okay on here. We, um, halfway up my street, we have those green, uh, put out by, uh, the gas company and, uh, Navigans Electric, not Navigans Electric, um, National Grid, and they, they have keys to it, they lock the gate, um, they do the work, they leave, they lock the gate, but the dirt bike riders have just found a way to get around the fences that, that got put up. So, um, the, the next answer came by putting large holders so that the dirt bikes couldn't get around the gate as easily, and, um, it seems to have slowed them down, but it hasn't brought them to a stop. So, I know it's like first hand, I have these things traveling in the neighborhood, they come up and down the street going forty-five, fifty miles an hour just to get to the, uh, the, the power lines, and, um, it's, it's, it's annoying. Um, but if, if we can do something with the Jersey Barrier as a temporary stopgap measure, which satisfies, uh, the, the people this evening, uh, knowing that we're gonna get together within a month, uh, to have some real, real resolve.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'd be concerned, and I would want input from the fire department about the Jersey Barriers.
What's that?
I would, I would want input from the fire department regarding the Jersey Barriers, if they're still gonna be able, be able to have access to that area if there's a fire.
Right. Um, I know the green, uh, gates that are on, uh, the gas lines and the, uh, power lines are not breakaway, so I don't know what happens if there's a fire down there. Uh, you'd have to ask the fire chief, uh, how you would get access to it.
I would want his input.
Mr. Grady, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I think the, the point of the gate, the intention of the gate was to, uh, to slow down, you know, the car and truck traffic that was going out there. I think what we're kinda getting at, um, before getting into topics about traffic and their bikes, A T V, is that, that, I think that's where we're at, from what we started.
The night of the fire, did the fire department go in through the road that was widened? They went in that way? Okay. That is a concern. Because if they put a Jersey Barrier, they would not be able to access that way. Mr. Tu, Tullin?
I was gonna say, it's, it's, for me, it's never been about the dirt bikes or the quads. Yes, it's annoying when they come whipping down the street, and my neighbors have, and I have been very quick to tell people, look, there are young children on the street, you just can't whip by here, but I've lived there seventeen years, I've lived with it, it's annoying, but I, I'm okay with it. The whole idea is the night of this bonfire, there were truckloads of kids bringing pallet after pallet after pallet back there, and yes, they're gonna get back there with their bikes, and yes, they're going to walk back there, but they're not gonna be able to carry all these pallets back there to have these humongous bonfires like they've been having. So, it's really just about stopping the car and truck traffic at this point in time, because summer's coming, parties are coming, and this is what's gonna happen back there. And the whole idea of the gate is what if the fire department does have to get back there? They're gonna have a key, the police will have a key, whoever needs a key and who owns a property, they can have that key. I don't want a key, I just wanna stop the cars and trucks from going back there all the time, which, again, was never a problem. I've always taken my lawnmower back there, built my grass flipping, I could barely fit through there, and then it got all cut wide open, and now that's what we're dealing with.
Mr. Karen, anything further? Mr. Karen, could you unmute yourself? Thank you.
If, if we can get ahold of the fire chief tomorrow, I mean, nothing's gonna happen in the next week. Um, if we can get ahold of the fire chief tomorrow to see what his opinion is, and, um, and between him and Tom Ferry, if they can come up with something, uh, temporary, that, that will stop the cars from going back there, at least we won't have any more bonfires.
Mr. Karen, there are a lot of unknowns.
Right. Too many unknowns.
I, I was wondering, or Mr. Pacheco, if you would be okay with a motion to table this to our next meeting to give Mr. Mullen, Mr. Ferry, the fire and police chief, a chance to come before the Board of Selectmen with a plan that answers many of these questions. I would also ask that the members of the Board of Selectmen submit their questions to Mr. Mullen so that he can have answers for them, so when we come back in two weeks, we can come to a solution to this problem.
That sounds, that sounds a bit like a plan to me.
Mr. Mullen, our next meeting is June sixth, June eighth. I will entertain a motion to table this discussion until the June eighth meeting.
I so move.
Mr. Karen, motion is made second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, fiscal year twenty twenty-two formula, contract Executive Office of Elder Affairs.
So, um, this, uh, like is the annual, uh, this is an inner formula, uh, formula grant, uh, uh, that were regularly awarded, uh, like and received from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, Mr. Chairman, and I would, uh, like, uh, like I would just recommend accepting the grant, as we've done in years past. This is, uh, this is a regular part of, this is a regular part of the course.
Mr. Pacheco, any?
Who was saying often this? Is it you, Unc?
Um, uh, I, I, like, I, like, I would actually, like, I would actually recommend, this grant is administered, uh, by the Council on Aging Director, um, so, um, so authorize, so authorize Annabella Powell, um, to, um, to, uh, God, um, to execute the grant documents on behalf of the town.
Uh, Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I agree.
Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to authorize Annabella Powell to enter into the contract with the Executive Office of Elder Affairs.
I so move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Uh, Mr...
Uh, Mr. Pacheco's an aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. We have a facilities request. Fly Dogs, uh, is looking for July twenty-third to use the field behind Town Pa, uh, Town Hall. Um, I'm not quite sure, Mr. Mullen, what...
Flying Dogs is?
Yes, and what...
Uh, uh, yeah, it's a program that, um, um, it is a program sponsored by the Dyton Public Library. Uh, they did it for the first year last year, uh, actually last July as well, and, and it turned into be, uh, like a really, really cool event, uh, sponsored by the library. Um, and what is it, and what the event entails, um, is, is exactly what it says. Uh, flying dogs, and, uh, the library, uh, the library, uh, the library has a company that, that has jumping and so-called flying dogs, and they do tricks and a whole bunch of other really cool fun things, so, um, uh, yeah, no, it's a really, really good event. I recommend approval.
Um, I do have a condition for approval from the Board of Health. If food is going to be sold or distributed, they will need a temporary food permit. I just wanna especially make that, make Mr. Karen aware of that since he is on Zoom, because he may not have the document in front of him.
I, I don't.
At, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the public library's request to use the field behind Town Hall on July twenty-third for the Fly Dogs presentation.
I so move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next, we have a facilities request by the Dyton Cub Scouts for a car wash on...
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth. Once again, if food sale will be sold, they will need a temporary permit. Uh, if they're not using the highway garage, they will need a porta potty. I don't know, is, Mr. Ferry still with us?
He is, he is. He may be having ice cream. He texted me that he was gonna grab a bowl of ice cream.
Mr. Ferry, are you still there? Okay, he's not.
Yes, yes, I am.
Oh, thank you. Um, will the Cub Scouts need a porta potty?
No, they will not. I'll have the facility open once they have the proper supervision there.
Mr. Ferry, you're a great man. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the Dyton Cub Scout Car Wash for June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I so move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda, the future of the Human Rights Committee. In June, we are going to be voting to approve members to the various committees in the town. And I wanted to address this issue before we came to the appointments. The role of town government should be to administer to the operation of the day-to-day functions of the town as prescribed by bylaws and mass general laws. Whenever government attempts to become involved in the social welfare of its residents, it runs the risk of polarizing the community, and in the case of the Human Rights Committee, I feel strongly that was the case. I credit Taunton Mayor Shawna O'Connell for having the wisdom to see this when a similar attempt was made in Taunton to form a Human Rights Committee. Taunton understood the need for celebrating cultural diversity, cultural and ethnic diversity, and wanted to do it in a way that was not politicized. With that in mind, city residents formed a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit diversity forum that is separate from town government and is a private organization. I pledged during my campaign that if I was elected, I would attempt to make this happen in the town of Dyton, and this evening, I will attempt to get this organization started. The residents of Dyton who put their heart and soul into the Human Rights Committee faced intense political pressure to conform to the values of a large group of residents who had a value system that differed from their Human Rights Committee members in general. When government attempts to play arbitrator to this type of political struggle, the results are quite often unproductive, and it takes time and energy away from the government's primary focus, and that is the day-to-day operation of the town. Last year, we witnessed this failure in Dyton, and Mayor O'Connell certainly recognized this when she chose to go in a different direction, and Taunton has had much success with the diversity forum. They have held public, they have invited the public to sessions to discuss controversial issues, they have held some wonderful festivals that they ran as a private organization, bound by their rules, and subject to their approval about what transpired at their private festival or meetings. With this in mind, I ask my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen to support a mo, motion to end the Human Rights Committee as a committee under the scope of the Board of Selectmen. I also ask that the former members of the Human Rights Committee, or the members of the Human Rights Committee, and other interested citizens join me in the formation of a five-oh-one C-three private organization with the purpose of working together to celebrate and share the diverse culture and ethnic traits and traditions that make Dyton a small town with a big heart. Thank you. Do I have any...
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, yes.
You've had over a year now to form this five-oh-one C-three Human Rights Committee, and you've yet to do that. Uh, I just wanna say that as the la, the liaison for the Human Rights Committee, I never thought for a second that people would be opposed to human rights. I found it hard to believe, and the members who worked very hard on that committee got a lot of pushback, foolish pu, pushback on this committee, and it's a shame that it, that they ended up resigning, and there may be two or three members left. So, I'm gonna support the motion to, uh, get rid of the Human Rights Committee since there doesn't appear to be, uh, much support, but, um, you ought to be a little embarrassed in this town, quite frankly, uh, the pushback that these members got, the hard-working members got.
Um, in response...
And I'm not interested in the mayor, or what the mayor of Taunton does. I live in Dyton.
In response to that, the reason why I waited a year to bring this up was the fact that I attempted on a couple of occasions during my first year on the board to bring this discussion up, and it never made... this discussion up, and it never made it on the agenda of the Board of Selectmen meeting. Uh, my position and role has changed. As chairman of the committee, I wanted to see this on the agenda for discussion. I have also been called out in a good way by my failure to keep a campaign promise. And I accepted that criticism and wanted to show the person who asked that that I will be someone who will attempt to keep his word. I am looking forward to people that were on the Human Rights Committee, many of which had left in frustration. I'm also looking forward to other citizens who may want to be involved in establishing this 501(c)(3). Not only am I willing to help in its formation, but I will also provide, um, help with the funding so that we can make this happen because there is a legal process involved. The 501(c)(3) is formally recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a nonprofit organization. Some of the wonderful things that the people in Dyton, I mean Taunton, have done, they've been able to do because the politics is not a part of it. They didn't have to get approval of a majority of any board. They didn't face political pressure from whether it be the Democratic Committee of their town or the Republican Committee of their town. People came together with a common goal, celebrating diversity and educating people of the differences that help make this nation a strong nation, the belief that people can work together, overcome their differences, and make something positive happen in this town. And with that end in mind, I will, at this time, entertain a motion to, um, end the Human Rights Committee as a committee under the scope of the Board of Selectmen.
I so move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. And again, I will be reaching out through social media if anyone is interested in joining the group, please re-contact me. I'm looking forward to putting together a group of citizens with that goal in mind. Thank you. Under, under new business. Earlier this evening, I entertained a motion. Or actually, did not approve the warrants. As I mentioned, I had concerns about one department in particular. However, Mr. Mullin has pointed out to me, if no warrants are approved, all payroll and vendor checks won't go out. At this time, uh, would the Board of Selectmen be amendable to approving the warrants as presented, but not including any payment to any accounts involving the Board of Assessors?
Uh, what about regular payroll? Um, so the Board is, the Board of Assessors' regular payroll, um, we would have a, uh, um, a likely labor issue if, like, if their payroll wasn't included as well.
Do we have the legal right to not pay the consultant's fee?
Um, we could pull that at this time, um, and then, I can then go back to the table and have a conversation about, uh, that I would recommend we pull, so if there is a question, uh, 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 but that we pull the consultant's, uh, fee, I'm going to, uh, I can approve all the other warrants, um, um, as submitted.
Since we voted to not approve any of the warrants...
We didn't vote. I made a motion, there was no second. We didn't vote.
Okay, thank you. So I will entertain a motion, uh, to approve the warrants with the exception of the consultant's fee, uh, consultant's payment. I don't have a motion, so as a result, the earlier decision will stand. The warrants will be paid, will be approved at this time.
They won't be approved.
They won't be approved.
I'll make the motion again. Warrants for May eighteen, twenty twenty-two, forty-six A dash twenty-two, in the amount of a hundred and nine dollars and six, hundred and, hundred and nine thousand dollars, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and nineteen cents, and forty-six B dash twenty-two, six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Okay, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall, no.
Warrants for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Make a motion that we approve the following warrants, forty-seven A dash twenty-two, a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and twenty-four cents, forty-seven B dash twenty-two, eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, and forty-seven C dash twenty-two, two hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is a no. Motion passes. Uh, public input. We have no public input. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Mr. Karen? Mr. Karen, I believe, has left the meeting. I will step down and second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you.
Good night.